It's a little after 6:00. Could I ask the clerk to call the roll?
Councilmember Berman.
Here.
Councilmember Burt. Councilmember Holman.
Here.
Councilmember Klein.
Here.
Vice Mayor Niss.
Here.
Councilmember Price.
Here.
Councilmember Sharp.
Here.
Councilmember Schmidt.
Mayor.
Mayor Shepherd. Eight present. I would like to make, if I could make an announcement, please, that there's a packet going out and my other part of my staff is upstairs getting the packet out for next Monday with an agenda that's saying the meeting's starting at 5:00 next Monday for labor. It actually will be revised tomorrow because we were told at 4:30 this afternoon they do not need the labor, so the meeting will start at 6:00 p.m. A revised agenda will go out tomorrow.
Good. Thanks very much. Okay, having called the roll, it's obvious that the mayor is absent. She's attending an airport roundtable meeting tonight, and she hopes to join us at least partway through, depending on how long that meeting takes. So looking for oral communications. Do we have any? Okay, there are no oral communications. We have two action items on tonight. The first one, as you can see, is talking about the sales tax that we have been discussing now for a period of time. And I'm also going to ask Richard in a minute to do a quick background on there, and then I'll look to Councilmember Price, who chairs this committee, to give us a report. So our second item tonight is, I'm sure most of you know, is to discuss our housing element, which has a time value to it. And Hillary Gettleman, who's our planning director, will discuss that with us and introduce that item. So, starting with that, I'm going to presume that, Herb, neither of these are on oral communications. They're on the items one and two. Okay, thanks very much. So, starting with the item number one, which is the approval of a letter regarding the Santa Clara County Transportation Project Sales Tax Increase. So, Richard, you said that you'd be willing to do a quick intro as to how we got to this point.
I'm happy to do that. Thank you, Vice Mayor Niss and councilmembers. Prior to your discussion tonight of the draft letter, you have before you all do a brief recap on how we got here. At the May 19 council meeting, Carl Gardino, CEO of the Silicon Valley Leadership Group, gave a presentation on the preliminary work his organization had done regarding a proposed quarter cent sales tax increase. The first indication council received was that, based on preliminary polling, there was strong support within the county for such an initiative. Next, he informed council the proposal his organization had for spending the approximately $3.5 billion that the quarter cent sales tax increase is estimated to generate over the 30-year life of the tax. As a part of that $3.5 billion, he mentioned that 1/7 of the funding, or approximately $500 million over the 30 years, would go to Caltrain. Later that evening, the item was referred to Policy and Services Committee by the council for additional discussion. At the May 20 Policy and Services Committee meeting, it was unanimously recommended that council consider sending the attached draft letter you have before you to the Silicon Valley Leadership Group recommending a 3/8 sales tax increase instead of a quarter cent sales tax increase, with the additional 8 cent going exclusively towards Caltrain modernization, including grade separations. With that, I'll turn it back over to you.
Thank you very much. And let me also say that our immediate past mayor, Greg Sharp, is acting as vice mayor tonight, manning the lights. So with that, let's go right to this item and go to the chair of the committee, Councilmember Price.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Hackman, for your presentation. Very clear, and thank you for preparing the original letter. And Councilmember Klein and I worked with Mr. Hackman to make revisions to the letter. We had a very lively discussion about this issue, as you can imagine, and we had several key points we wanted to make sure we were driving home in the letter. One is the critical importance of Caltrain, not only to our part of the county, but to the region in general. And we felt very strongly that the Bay Area Rapid Transit System, the BART system, is also a very important part of the overall regional network. But in fact, its success and its ability to serve mid and north county in particular is very strongly tied to the enhancement of service and performance for Caltrain. And there are many items that Caltrain has identified and others that will improve the service of Caltrain, particularly the capacity of Caltrain and the performance. The most important thing is, again, the connection, the connectivity, the ease of moving from one system to another. As you know, Phase Two of BART will run from Berriessa through downtown San Jose, and the certified EIR takes it all the way to the city of Santa Clara. So we made a strong pitch about the importance of Caltrain and improvements to the system. We also felt that, in order to fund these options, there should be a strong consideration of a 3/8 cent tax instead of the 1/4 that has been in the initial preliminary discussions of this transportation measure. We feel that the issue, again, of Caltrain and the connection to BART are very critical. Another element which we mentioned in the letter is specifically identifying grade separations as an important improvement. Just by way of context, there are 10 parts of the Caltrain alignment where you have at-grade crossings, and certainly not every city might be interested in this, but these are very critical improvements that could increase the efficiency, safety, and operations of Caltrain. And again, a sidebar comment, the each grade separation could be at least approximately $150 million. So in the concluding part of the letter, we also talked about the importance of having a clear process for fund allocation, providing some flexibility within each category. We cite the 2004 San Mateo County Transportation Tax, which has a model for allocation of funds and has a specific expenditure plan. The letter also notes that if the 3/8s were to be the methodology used, the proposal here in the letter is that the additional money secured from that adjustment would go to Cal-- were recommending it go to Caltrain, and that the $500 million originally designated for Caltrain could be reallocated to other worthwhile projects in Santa Clara County. So those are the main points, and I want to thank the committee for working hard on this. And we tried to capture some of the comments made by the full city council the night before. And do other people on Policy and Services want to add to the comments that I've made?
And Gail, we heard from three members of the public the other night. Would you entertain hearing from the one member of the public who'd like to speak now, and then we could go to the committee members?
Sure, that's fine, sure.
So, Mr. Borack, would you like to speak?
Thank you, Vice Mayor Niss, and good evening, everybody. I believe that the reason that the Silicon Valley Leadership Group, which represents the largest employers in the area, want the tax is because it provides transportation for bringing their workers to and from work. So it should really be those companies that should be being taxed to pay for this. If you're going to do a tax, I don't believe that it should be done by increasing the tax to pay for the needs of Caltrain, including grade separations. I think it should come out of the original amount that's being proposed. The idea that we should add more, a higher tax, in effect that we should be supporting all this money for BART just so we can get money for Caltrain, is the same logic that was used with high-speed rail, that we should be spending a lot of money on high-speed rail because then we'll get some money for Caltrain. And over time, we found that that's something that, idea that people reject. There's been polling done on the smaller amount, but not on larger amount. And in terms of arguments against a ballot measure for such a tax, I believe both of the things I just mentioned will be effective. One, that we're being asked to spend more money to support something else so that we can get Caltrain, I would think's not a good idea. And the other, that after polling was done for a smaller tax to see how people felt, then the tax was changed to a higher amount. So I believe there would be a better chance of having a tax passed if it was left at the smaller amount, and we would designate the appropriate amount for Caltrain. Otherwise, you may want to consider the Daily Post position, and that is that the cities, such as Palo Alto and Mountain View and Sunnyvale, if they don't get what they need, then they could actively oppose the tax. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. I'll turn it back to Councilmember Price to call on whichever members you'd like to have talk next. That's unusual. I'll start to my left. Councilmember Klein, did you have additional comments?
I don't think additional comments are required. Actually, I will move that we accept the letter as shown in our materials.
Okay, as is our practice, would you like to speak further to your motion?
No, I think that Councilmember Price well-covered the issues and why we're saying what we're saying, and we'll see where we go from there.
This is going to be succinct in that case. And Councilmember Sharp?
Well, it was going to be succinct. So first of all, just a little cleanup, I think we need to change the letter, too. It's our June 4 politics city council meeting, right? It wasn't the June 2. So I think we just need to fix that in the letter. A couple of things. I think that this whole measure, in the context of the whole thing, I think bringing BART to Duradan is very important. And I think if we bring BART to Duradan, we fix Caltrain, it becomes transformative for the ballot. Caltrain is the spine of Silicon Valley. Without Caltrain, we couldn't have mobility. And frankly, by having the extra 8 cent, we solve the issues with Caltrain for the most part. We get to do grade separations, we get to do leveling platforms, we get to have much more capacity, speed, efficiency. And without it, I think we end up with gridlock. So I think the 1/8 cent extra for BART is extremely important. But that doesn't mean that bringing BART, frankly, to Duradan is not important, because what we do then is we link up BART with Caltrain, and then eventually, hopefully, they bring Caltrain into on the Transbay Terminal, at which point we then have a functioning transportation system. And I think all of that, this gets us very, very close to that, and that's the most we can do in Santa Clara County. So I think it's critically important that we get that extra 1/8 cent.
So let's just go down the line. We've got Greg Schmidt.
Yeah, thanks for the draft letter. I read it, and it seems as though it's a little too polite, giving the Silicon Valley Organization the chance to come back to us and say, gee, we talked it over, and the latest polling results say we can't quite go to 3/8s, I'm sorry. And that leaves us where we are. I think it would be a much stronger statement and better reflective of the discussion we had if you dropped the last sentence in the second paragraph and put in its place the sentence, "Without the higher 3/8 cent tax rate, the share going to BART and Caltrain should be equalized." So that puts a little pressure on them, is their support.
Well, let me look to the maker of the motion to see whether or not the motion, the maker, Klein, and the second, Sharp, are willing to incorporate that.
No.
Okay, there's a no on that one. So do you want to move it to an amendment?
Yeah.
Okay, so there's an amendment, the last sentence in the second paragraph. It's not reading quite correctly yet, but I think you all know what it's going to say. So it will emphasize, rather than de-emphasize, as I presume you meant Councilmember Schmidt, you wanted to have this have a much higher impact than you think it does in the current letter.
That's right.
So with that, Councilmember Burt. No, I'm sorry, it was Karen.
Yeah, I need a little bit of data here. And since you all discussed it extensively at Policy and Services, if the BART, excuse me, if the quarter cent was split equally, what does that not accomplish? What does it accomplish or not accomplish?
Why don't we ask Richard? We can use staff, I think, for this unless somebody up here wants to explain it, but I think Richard can spell it out.
I can give you just a little bit of context. Approximately, under the quarter cent proposal, that would generate the $3.5 billion, you have approximately a third going to BART, a third going to highway improvements, and a third going to other projects, including the $500 million for Caltrain. So if you were to go to the 3/8 cent tax, then you would be at about $1.75 billion for Caltrain. Is that what you were wondering in terms of data?
If a third goes to BART, does that accomplish BART getting to Duradan?
Yes.
Okay.
I think it's slightly different than that, if you don't mind me explaining it. My understanding is the first 1.3 goes right to BART in order to complete the process. The 1/3rd, 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 I think, comes after the initial part of the current statement that we have. Am I correct?
I think that's correct, I'm sorry.
Yeah, so it really takes care of BART first, and I think that's pretty much what Councilmember Schmidt is addressing, that it's BART first and Caltrain second, and I'm going to guess that's what you were troubled by.
But Richard is correct, that a third does go to highways and that kind of stuff, roughly.
After the initial, yes, after. City manager.
Well, no, I would just add another thing. I mean, it's sort of open-ended, the way this is worded right now, that they would be equalized, because one of two things could happen on this amendment. One, we would say that all of the other projects, other than BART and Caltrain, are almost excluded. Or, you know, or more specifically, would you take the total $3.2 billion, or whatever it is, and equally divide it up between those two? Because, you know, it's going to be hard for BART to take a lot of additional sacrifice, potentially, so.
Yeah, I think that's accurate. There is a long preamble, and then it goes into a third, a third, a third. But BART certainly is front and center on this. Councilmember Klein, will you next? And then Councilmember Burt? Let me go to Pat first, who hasn't had a chance to speak. I'll come back to you.
Pardon me. So one of the questions I'm thinking through in my own mind is whether we're going to have another opportunity to take a follow-up position, depending on the response to what we're requesting. And what we're requesting, if it was achievable, if it polled successfully and then went successfully to the voters, it would be truly transformative for Caltrain. And so I think tonight, my inclination is to focus on that objective, and then, depending on what occurs in response to what we're advocating, we can think of our next step.
So that says you're not supporting the amendment, am I correct?
You'll know when I cast my vote. We don't have to say those things at this time.
I just want to make sure I understood you, though, since I will also cast a vote. Councilmember Klein.
Well, I'm glad to disclose that I will be voting no on the amendment. I think it's a bad psychology, bad negotiating tactics, and really a non-starter. The, any negotiation, you have to take into account what the other party wants, so everybody's interest is taken into account. The main motivator of this is BART, and the formula being suggested would not provide for the 1.3 billion that is needed for BART to be completed. So by suggesting something that undercuts the very motivation that this private agency, the leadership group, it is a private agency, this is not another government's entity, I think you're undermining our credibility. I think they would rightly say, you guys aren't listening to us at all when you propose something that makes impossible the very thing we want. I don't see what we'd be accomplishing. The next is, as Councilmember Burt has pointed out, this is not the end, this is the beginning. And the idea that we should be tougher or be less polite, I think is...
Do you want to speak again?
That's just bad negotiating strategy. We're not anywhere near any type of deadlock or anything of that nature where a tough sound would be appropriate. These are people that we're trying to reach an agreement with. Nobody has said no to anything yet. We're a long way from the final resolution of this, and in general, in those situations, it pays to be polite. And I don't think that, unless we're just grandstanding, that it pays to say, we're going to be, we're going to really be tough on this.
Are we on the air tonight? Councilmember Schmidt?
Yeah, just to speak to the motion, the intention is to look at the current numbers, which are 1.3 for BART and $500,000 for Caltrain, and say that we want some kind of equalization, maybe at $800 million each. The goal is to outline as clearly as possible that Caltrain is as important for ridership as the extension of BART is for Santa Clara County and for the employers in Santa Clara Valley, and to make sure that the presentation to the public, if BART is more important than the 3/8s sent, vote becomes more prominent in their minds. So I think it is a good opening to a discussion and makes the point clearly where the interests of the north county lie.
Just a technical question, are we actually on the air? There are no lights on.
They're taping this, but I don't know that we're live, if that's what you're asking. We'll check.
Well, usually even when they're taping it, it's, there's some indication, so perhaps they are.
Brena says it's not live.
Pardon?
Brena mentioned it's not live.
Yeah, that's why you're sitting here, right? Councilmember Sharp?
Thank you. Just briefly, I think I agree with everything Councilmember Klein just said, and I think it's really important to recognize, too, that this is not just about Caltrain and BART, that if you look at, on the packet, what it actually talks about, what got support, 86% support increased transit services for seniors and the disabled, 88% for walking and biking, 87% for street maintenance and pothole repair, you know, and 82% for easing congestions on all eight expressways. If we did this, there wouldn't be money for these other items, of which polled extremely well, and polled better, frankly, than either BART or Caltrain. And I think that would be an issue that the Santa Clara County Leadership Group would have. I think they might have difficulty passing this measure if we did this. And that's why it's important to do the 8 cent sales increase, because otherwise, there is no money, additional money, roughly.
So I don't have any other lights on at this point. Gail?
Just a point of clarification. As you know, this decision as to if this goes to the VTA Board of Directors or the Board of Supervisors has not yet been made. It's looking likely that it'll go to VTA Board. There has been, there will be a very brief discussion tomorrow about this proposed sales tax at VTA, largely a staff presentation to get initial input. No action will be taken. There will be a study session on June 26, the VTA Board, and if it proceeds along those lines, it would come to the VTA Board the first meeting in August. So I just wanted to clarify that.
Yeah, that's probably easier, right? So before I call for the vote, let me just make a couple of comments. Fortunately, we were meeting with what's called Group Two this afternoon from VTA. Gail Price and I were meeting, and there was somebody on the phone from Mountain View, somebody presently there from Los Altos Hills, and another person from Los Altos. And I think Gail would agree, we were reminded that this is not going to be a popular tax everywhere. One person indicated that his city would definitely vote no. And I think there is some confusion in some of the other cities. We're probably the most zealous about wanting the extra 8th of a cent, and I'm going to hope if it doesn't, if that doesn't pan out, that we will still support the 1/4 cent. I think that I'd rather have something at the end than nothing at all. So I do want us to be aware that there are many other parts of the county, and as Councilmember Sharp just said, we also have a great demand for senior services, for regular bus lines and so forth, for people in our county and very low-income groups who have a difficult time crossing the county in a variety of ways to get to their jobs. So with that, could you vote on the amendment on the board? And so that fails, let me think. Yes, but I'm going to...
What are you talking about? Sorry?
So I'm looking at the, you know what, I can't tell with those different lights. Would we all agree that it's...
Fails on the 3.
Thank you.
Holman, Burt, and Schmidt voting yes.
Excellent, excellent. We have a report from the field.
I'm sorry, I...
I wondered what you were doing.
So I had meant to vote no on that, so.
Okay, and, okay. We've got it, we've got it clear. Okay.
Thinking the main motion.
Yes, it's now a 6 to 2 vote. So thank you very much, and I need to put my glasses on so I can see that board. So then this letter will be sent forward from...
Need to vote.
We have voted on it, yeah. Now we need to vote on the main.
But I'd like to speak.
I apologize. I'm getting too excited about the main motion. Okay, in that case, that was the amendment that failed, and we are now going on to the main motion. And with that, Councilmember Berman, you'd like to speak to the main motion, and I would comment, you haven't spoken yet.
Thank you for that. A couple of questions of staff. The first is, and I just couldn't remember from the information that we got when this item was before us previously, has anybody done an analysis of how much of the sales tax money is expected to come from north county or from Palo Alto, or Palo Alto, Mountain View, and Sunnyvale? I don't recall that being a part of, they know how much money they're anticipating. I assume that they've got some geographic...
I don't know if we have the whole north county. I do remember when we did a very preliminary population versus sales tax generation, where we were about 3.5% roughly of the county population, we're almost 7.5% of the sales tax generation.
And that's just Palo Alto?
Just Palo Alto.
Okay. And do you guys remember, I, in a former life, was on the Independent Monitoring Commission for the Clean, Safe, Creeks, and Natural Flood Protection Plan for the Santa Clara Valley Water District, which was a citizen oversight commission to make sure that the money from that measure was spent where it was supposed to go?
Hopefully, there wasn't an acronym for that group.
Yeah, I try to come up, fitting that on a resume is brutal. But it's a good idea for something to have. You know, it's a citizen oversight commission, there are citizens from all areas of the county who, you know, when there's a lot of confusion or distrust about whether or not the money's being spent as it was supposed to be, something like this, a body like this that puts out a report every year showing what the money was spent towards, I feel like this effort would benefit from that. what the money was spent towards, I feel like this effort would benefit from that. I don't recall if there was a...
Yes.
There's something in there?
Yes.
Okay, thanks. That answers that question. That's all I got.
Want to speak any further?
Nope.
Okay, so we are back to the main motion, which is...
May I make a comment before you vote? Is that okay?
Absolutely. Will you be voting?
No, I'm not voting. It's just more as far as local color and everything, though, but I mean, I actually think that the committee recommendation was a thoughtful and artful approach. I mean, 500 million can sound like a lot, but it seems pretty clear that there is a lot of thought in what the amount of money needs to go to BART to be able to really complete that piece of the system. And 500 million doesn't really complete what is necessary to really integrate this system as a whole on Caltrain. And so this moves us away from trending towards a little bit of a zero-sum situation to a potential win-win if it plays out. And I would just say, we talk about the southern linkage with BART, but there's an existing northern linkage that connects at Millbrae, and there are lots of Caltrain riders who do that. I was one of them yesterday. And if you did follow me on Twitter, you would share, you could see the picture that I took at quarter of six. When I, when the, when I went to get on the Caltrain at Millbrae, I was waiting for all of the people to get off of Caltrain so I could get on the train. And of course, nobody was getting off. So it was standing room only, packed in there. And so these points about what a lifeline this is to Silicon Valley, I just think is something that we need to be thinking about, how we make, make this point over and over. Thanks.
And in the meantime, Councilmember Holman has turned her light on.
Yeah, a question, perhaps this is for the Chair of Policy and Services. The last sentence, the last sentence that is still in here, given the last vote, it talks about increasing, or it would allow 500 million dollars currently allocated to Caltrain to go towards other county transportation needs. Was there any discussion at committee about any kind of equitable distribution of that? Because we all know that the expenditures tend to flow south. Was there any discussion about that at committee?
We didn't explicitly, as it relates to the sentence, go into a detailed discussion about how that could be done. I think our intention was to certainly, maybe we need to be more explicit about projects that are tangible, that serve, you know, mid and North County is one of our goals here, and Caltrain being a critical part of that. But we didn't have an extensive discussion about the point you're making. Do other committee members have comments on this?
I have a comment on that, then. My comment would be that we purposefully, at least I purposefully, did not want to go further than that at this time. As Councilmember Burt pointed out, or as Councilmember Klein, I can't remember, we will have another opportunity, at which point we can get into details like that if we feel strongly about it. But right now, this is a negotiation to get this. If we get this, it would be so huge, frankly.
We're confident we will get another crack at this. Confident that they will not just respond, but also look for input as well.
Well, we can always give the input when they respond.
Whether they ask for it or not, so. Gail, you had something else to say?
Yeah, I would say, you know, it's really, we can do, we can have correspondence and with Carl Gardino and the VTA Board as often as we want. That's really in our, it's in our bailiwick. And there will be additional times to respond. I think I concur with other comments. This is really sort of our opening statement. We didn't want to paint ourselves into a corner. We wanted to sort of have a bold statement at the beginning with a couple of suggestions about funding methodology and that kind of thing. But we expect that there will be a response. If there's not, we can continue to pursue this. So this is not the only chance, because, you know, this is complicated, and there are a lot of elements and a lot of implications.
Anticipating further opportunity for refinement, I'm good with that.
I think that's something we can define.
Again, asking for comments from the committee on that particular question. Councilmember Schmidt?
I guess I'm a little baffled by the time to response. The timeline we got was this would be presented at the end of June, June 26th meeting, and the final VTA vote will be August 4th. Given the council's schedule, between now and August 4th, I don't see a time to effectively respond, aside from this.
Anything else? Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Thank you for all your comments. Could we vote now on the main motion? Oh, I don't vote, yes.
I think it's important to say it.
Pardon, you want me to repeat the motion?
Uh, no.
Okay. In that case, this passes semi-unanimously with eight of us voting and the mayor absent for the present. Okay, that takes us, thank you all very much, that takes us to our next item, and we'll exchange staff. Give you a minute. So we're going to talk about the administrative draft to the housing element, which needs to be submitted to the state's agency, HCD, for preliminary review. This item supports the council's work plan and reflects the expedited schedule that's needed for Palo Alto to meet the state's deadline for certification without the risk of lawsuits, penalties, and so forth. There are three recommended actions under this item and a potential fourth for your consideration. Provide direction to include residential sites in the housing element, number one. Two, accept the strategy that will continue to look at transit-rich locations for housing during the comp plan process, so those areas can later be transferred into the housing element in exchange for the current identified units located along San Antonio and South El Camino Real by amending the housing element if desired. And I think that's an important point in this. And three, provide direction regarding submittal of the administrative draft to the HCD for their review. And if we're interested, if any of you are interested, we can also schedule another review session on June 9th, and that may dawn a turn green, or 16th, or designate that task to the, to the task force itself. So one more thing I want to point out, there's currently an application in process for 4146 El Camino Real to increase their zoning from 15, RM 15 to RM 30. And this site has been identified as the vacant billboard lot. It's on page 730, attachment C, under list of existing housing element units, even though its current zoning would allow 11 units, and the proposed rezoning would permit 21. So this has not come before us for review, and therefore, we need to consider the number of units that should be assumed for the site. So the most important thing, this came forward without a recommendation, it was a split two-two, but the request was to bring the item to the full council for recommendation. So let me suggest the following. We'll first hear from city staff, and then, if it's okay with you, Chairperson Schmidt of this committee, I will ask Mr. Borak to make a comment, and then go to you for your report. Does that work? Okay, so, Planning Director Gittleman, proceed ahead.
Thank you, Chair Niss, members of the council. I'm Hillary Gittleman, the city's planning director. I'm joined by Tim Wong, our staff expert on these housing issues. And we're here to talk about our housing element update for the period 2015 to 2023. Tonight, we're going to talk, we're going to take maybe 15, 20 minutes to give a presentation. This is a kind of a complicated subject matter, although the four of you who are members of the Regional Housing Mandate Committee have heard most of this before. We're going to start with a discussion about why we're doing this at all. And the simplest answer is that it's the state law. This is the only element of local agencies' general plans, in our case, our comprehensive plan, that the state must review and certify. Housing law is long and complicated. The state actually sets a schedule for updating housing elements and has very specific requirements about their contents. So the state also sets a deadline, and the deadline we're working towards now is January 31st of 2015. The state does give a grace period of three months, but effectively in the statute, the deadline is January 31st, 2015, for the state to certify the city's housing element. And for the first time in this cycle, there are some real consequences if local jurisdictions don't meet the statutory deadline. The most significant of the potential consequences is a loss, a potential loss of local control if we would get sued and a court would assert jurisdiction to force the city to comply with the housing statutes. There is some good news in all of this, though, because the city of Palo Alto had its last housing element certified so recently, that was in August of 2013. A lot of what we have in our current document is still good and can be reused. And we've provided an administrative draft to the council. It's a partial document, really just a first draft. It's partial because it doesn't contain the chapter on sites. We couldn't complete that without the input we're going to get from you this evening. But the partial admin draft highlights the change, the areas that are proposed to change from the current housing element. And if you had an opportunity to flip through, you'll see a lot of the existing housing element remains same. We're only changing where we need to change for substantive changes or for clarity. This slide summarizes the required contents of housing elements, and all of these, as I said, except for sites, are included within the administrative draft, which you received earlier, I think it was a week or two ago. The sites that we have to identify tonight, and this is really where we need your help, have to address what's called our regional housing needs allocation, or our RENA, which is divided into four categories for various income levels. Our total RENA in this cycle is 1,988 units. As opposed to the last cycle, it was 2,860 units. So this is trending in a good direction for us, but still potentially a challenge, and we'll get to that in a minute. We do have to be specific about the sites that we're designating to meet this RENA allocation, although, as I've said, a lot of our existing sites can be carried forward if they're still available. And this next slide shows you some of the math that we're working with. This is where we believe we are. So the top line here, excuse me, is the city's RENA allocation, 1,988. The second line is a suggested surplus of 200 units. And I should stop for a minute and say, it is very usual, typical, that HCD requires you to provide sites for more than your RENA number, because the housing cycle is eight years long. And during that cycle, some of those sites are going to develop for other things or no longer be available. And so they always look to jurisdictions to have some surplus. Now, the Regional Housing Mandate Committee suggested some strategy here, that maybe in the first draft we submit to HCD, we have less than the 200 surplus. We go with, submit a draft that has, you know, 100 or 150 surplus, and we hold the rest of that surplus in our back pocket. But just for purposes of our discussion, we've brought forward the surplus of 200 and the total target of 2,188 units. Now, the good news, as I indicated, a lot of sites can carry forward, so that's 1,379 units that can carry forward. And then we have a bunch of units that have been built or that are in the pipeline. Most, a lot of those units are the Mayfield development projects, so we can deduct those. The unmet need at the end of all this calculation is 369 units. So that's the mountain that we've been trying to climb at the Regional Housing Mandate Committee and that we need your help on tonight. So staff had developed a spreadsheet tool to help us test various different ways to get to this number. And Tim is going to describe kind of how that put together, it was put together, and end with our recommendation, which at this point would not require any rezoning. It would simply rely on sites with their existing zoning. So I'll hand it over to Tim.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm Tim Wong, Senior Planner. As Hillary said, yes, staff has prepared a sites tool, which is, was created to encourage the public to help play with, use the tool to play with sites to help get us to this 369-unit unmet need. And the sites tool is located on the city's housing element update website. It's a fairly long address, so it'd be best to Google housing element update to get to the sites tool. And in the sites tool, the sites are organized into tiers, in which I will be presenting very shortly. But these tiers are arranged in a way that they are most easily implementable. In other words, they're by right, no rezone is necessary, and even acceptability to HCD. So for example, our first tier, or the most easily acceptable, we think, is residential second units. These are units that are allowed by right in the R1 zoning, and we, the city approves approximately four per year. So over an eight-year cycle, staff feels that 32 units would be produced, if you will, that can be applied against the 369 units of unmet need. HCD will easily accept this, so that's why it's Tier One. The only downside, if you will, is that these sites, because of rent levels in Palo Alto and what you can get for a second unit, they would be deemed as moderate or maybe above moderate in their affordability. We could not apply them towards our low, our very low numbers. The second site is the Frye's site. It is approximately, a little less than 12 and a half acres. It's zoned RM 30. And so if it's calculated at a realistic capacity, realistic capacity of 20 dwelling units per acre, the site would yield a total of 249 units. Just, realistic capacity, the 20 units per acre is, yes, it's zoned at RM 30, but historically the city has never zoned or approved 30 dwelling units per acre. Generally, it's about 20. Therefore, 20 is a much more realistic number to use. In addition, 20 units per acre is the city's default density. Default density is a state requirement that says that that is the minimum density sufficient to produce affordable housing. Be happy to go into that a little further if the council wishes. And 75 units have already been identified in the current housing element. Therefore, the Frye's site would yield an additional 174. In other words, we could apply 174 units to the 369 units of unmet need. The third tier are 14 parcels on San Antonio. These 14 parcels are on the southern edge of San Antonio, between Charleston and Middlefield. They are zoned CS. And please note that there are some parcels on San Antonio that have an AD or an automotive dealership overlay on them. These parcels do not include the parcels with the AD overlay, neither does it include the Summer Winds Nursery. These sites were chosen, these parcels were chosen, because in the CS zone, housing is allowed by right as part of a mixed-use development. And again, these were calculated at 20 dwelling units per acre for a potential of 168 units. Tier four are California Avenue parking lots, surface parking lots. Using a criteria of lots greater than half an acre, there, that produced three parcels along Sherman Avenue. These are zoned PF, so a rezone would be required. And also, there's a comp plan designation of MISP, municipal, something special facility. But it would require a comp plan amendment to allow for residential uses. But if chosen, the California Ave. parking lots could yield 60 units, again, at that 20 dwelling units per acre. Tier five are the University Avenue surface parking lots. Again, using the half-acre or larger, that would be three parcels. The three parcels are listed in your staff report. These are also zoned PF, and we require a rezone. But if chosen... But if chosen, 37 units would be, could be produced, if you will. Getting to the lower tiers, Tier Six are residentially zoned sites, but they have long-term established non-commercial, or non-residential uses on them. The photo you see is the Achieve Kids School on Middlefield. It is fairly large, I forgot, almost two acres. It's zoned RM 30. However, the school has been in existence for years. And so to realistically or think that it could be converted to housing sometime soon is less than likely.
Just an informational point, is that our land, Palo Alto or county land?
It is in county, city jurisdiction, it's on Middlefield, yeah. It's a private school.
It's, yeah, county land, I think. It's leased from the county.
I don't believe so.
It's all right, we can check on it later.
Okay. Yes, I will certainly double-check. And the other two parcels, there's one parcel on Alma, the former YWCA, which is now a synagogue. That is zoned R1, but since it's a large, such a large site, that could produce 20-plus units. And the third parcel is a RM 15-zoned parcel on the corner of Churchill and El Camino, and it has a current medical office use. But if chosen, 68 units could be produced from that. And lastly, this is kind of a hail mary, but Tier Seven is increase the capacity yield in our current housing inventory. Currently, most of them are calculated at the 20 dwelling units per acre threshold. However, many of them are zoned CS or RM 30. Therefore, we've only calculated them at about 67% of their zoning capacity. If we're to increase to 85% of the zoning capacity, I think, calculated that 358 additional sites could be produced from that additional capacity. The only, the issue would be, HCD may not accept this argument, seeing how the city has historically never zoned up to that 85% capacity. It has recently with 3159, El Camino Real, and also 801 Alma, but previous developments have not been at such a high capacity. In addition, the state allows up to 25% of the RENA requirement to be fulfilled by existing units. Under three types of very stringent programs, you can take credit using existing units. They are conversion of existing market rate units to affordable units, preserving affordable housing that is at risk. At risk is defined as, within the next five years, the deed restrictions would come off, or rehabilitation of existing units. However, those are the substan, they would have to be substandard, and at this point, there are no substandard units in Palo Alto, I believe. And at the urging, or at the direction of the RHMC, staff reached out to Palo Alto Housing Corporation to see if they had any units that fell within these three categories. And they came back, and they have 23 units that have no deed restrictions, that we can be able to take these 23 units and apply them towards the RENA unmet need. And these units are at the Colorado Park Apartments on Colorado Avenue. So as Hillary mentioned, staff has been working closely with the Housing Element Community Panel, with the PTC, and the RHMC in identifying these sites. There has been a common theme through the three groups that go ahead, use the existing units. We think that in addition to the existing units, residential second units, those 32 units are appropriate to apply towards the unmet need, and a certain number of units at Fries. There was less agreement about those numbers. And throughout, it certainly was a frustration about this state-mandated January 31st, 2015 deadline that we must adhere to. And so at the May RHMC meeting, there was a proposal or a motion to identify certain sites, and also, in addition to identifying those sites, put in a program to say that the site identification process would continue post HCD certification. In other words, let's accept some sites now, knowing that they aren't fully acceptable. However, let's continue this process and look for more appropriate or more acceptable sites as part of the comp plan process. So based on that direction, staff took the ball and ran with it, and also recommended it to the PTC at their May 28th meeting. And the PTC did recommend that, to meet the 369 units of unmet need, to use the 23 units at Colorado Park, the second tier site, or second units, the Tier One, to designate 146 units at the Fries site, and to accept 168 units at San Antonio. In addition to that sites recommendation, they also recommended to continue the re-review process and look into exchanging some of the San Antonio and El Camino sites possibly for other sites as part of the comprehensive plan process. So next steps, we're hoping to submit an initial draft to HCD for their initial consultation at the end of June, and then in July and August, work on those comments, along with continuing to work with the PTC, the RHMC, and the Community Panel about programs. And also, in August and November, begin the formal process of looking at the revised draft and taking it through those three groups, looking for their official recommendation with, hopefully, coming to the council for their recommendation for adoption in November in, to be ready for the January 2015 deadline. And so here is staff's formal recommendation, and that concludes our staff's presentation. Any questions, we'll be happy to answer.
So, any more comments from staff? Okay, so I think we'll do the process suggested, which is we'll go to the public, Herb Barack first, and then Bob Moss. And if anyone else wants to speak to this, this is a good time to fill out a card.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Niss. You've been talking about negotiations on both agenda items, and I'm reminded that Will Rogers said that negotiation is the art of talking until you can find a rock. On the housing element, I agree with the approach of staff and the committee of using existing residentially zoned sites and not requiring any rezoning or amendment to the land use and community design element of the comprehensive plan. We have a very tight deadline to meet, even with the four-month grace period to go into the end of May. And any kind of controversy might, of changing the, what's permitted on any of these sites that would be in the housing element, could lead to unnecessary delay that would risk meeting the eight-year time cycle instead of the four-year time cycle. In regard to the proposal of staff and the committee for the particular sites chosen, and also about how big the additional number of units should be, the number of, additional number of units in, if it's a negotiating position, that's up to the council. However, I thought that it would be more appropriate on the Fries site to leave it at the 174. That site is zoned for 30 units per acre. There's been talk of, from the California Avenue concept plan, of perhaps changing the land use or zoning for that site. But in any kind of intensification, I doubt that it would be, it wouldn't go below CS zoning. And CS zoning allows the same 30 units of acre with the same FAR as RM 30. And if you wanted to reduce and exchange to bring it up to 174, I guess you could do it from the San Antonio sites. As far as studying things in the comprehensive plan, we need a internally consistent comprehensive plan. I don't believe it's particularly necessary to call out particular sites, but if you are calling them out, I would omit those Rostodaro Road sites. Those of you who are here, the last time we talked about rezoning a 10,000-square-foot lot minimum site, which is where the Gamble Garden site is, to multiple-family housing, know what that would do to the community. And this site's across the street from single-family, and having things on the opposite side of a street is the wrong place to be changing the land use. In regard to the parking lot sites, there is an RFP for having, I guess it's solar energy on those sites, which would impact any use of them, and I would think the council may want to consider that, because I think that's a, they're good sites to use.
And those 77 acres are infamous, as you recall.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Niss and council members. I'd like to suggest a few modifications to the staff's suggestions. First of all, instead of having a margin of 200 additional units, cut that back to 100. As we all know, Palo Alto was built out, there were very few vacant lots, and there's no justification for allowing a significant number of additional housing units. We can hold those in reserve for the future. Second, when it comes to the sites, I think Tier One, obviously, and the 23 units at Colorado Park are just, those are obvious. Tier Two, on the Fries site, I would prefer that we identify fewer units, because what I'm concerned about is if we identify that as having high-density housing, or too many housing units, it will encourage a property owner not to renew the Fries lease, which runs out in three or four years, and you'd go to housing. Make a lot more money from that than he will by renting it. I don't know if you're aware of this, but in the last seven years, Palo Alto has had the first through to fourth, excuse me, no lower than the fourth highest housing cost in the entire United States. Not for cities that have both housing and commercial. We are a very high, high-cost area. I don't want to see anything that would drive out Fries. On Tier Three, only select those sites which are necessary to make the total of 269 total units. I don't want, I don't want to have us put anything on the table that we have, more than we have to, and hold those sites in reserve for the future. On the customs, I ended speaking before the council, I got this one through. On the other tiers, one of the things I think we should be looking at more is preserving sites which can be converted from BMR units to market rate. And one of them strikes me is a Termon site. I believe the BMR restriction on the Termon site runs out in about four years. And so that's an area that we should be looking at very closely. The other thing we can be looking at is converting, or taking houses which are at market rate and acquiring as many, let's call them rights, as possible to convert them to BMR units. I think that'd be cheaper in the long run than buying, than building new housing units. So, and all the others, tiers four, five, six, seven, I would hold it in reserve until we really need them. Because I know in the future, four or five years from now, the state's going to ask us to put in more housing. Keep these in our back pocket, so we have them when we need them. But only identify the sites that we think are realistic in the short term. Thank you.
Thank you. Steve Pierce, and for those of you who might have come in, we're discussing item number two, which is the housing element, if anyone else wishes to speak to this.
Honorable mayor, members of the council, I am Steve Pierce, reside in downtown North. I wish to address tiers four and five, which are the Palo Alto-owned parking lots in California Avenue as well as downtown. And I believe that it's not prudent to include these on the, on the candidate list. We have a parking crisis, enough has been documented about that. I think that anything that we do to reduce the potential yield of parking on those sites through structures and so forth would not be a good thing. These really need to be held in reserve to deal with that issue. So even if we allowed parking and we went from X spaces allowed on a lot to 2X, we're still foreclosing the opportunity to have four or five X if parking structures were built. So I don't think these are really good candidate sites and shouldn't really get further consideration. We have to consider, too, that these are precious resources, and, you know, we're looking, housing needs in the next five, 10 years and so forth, we're going to need those parking resources for not just the next 10 years, we're probably the next 110 years. So we need to really take a long-term viewpoint on the value of those for parking and parking only. Thank you.
Thank you. Last one I have so far is Lois Salo.
I'm glad the city is working on low-income housing, in addition to which we need to consider homeless shelters. I know they have been, you've been working on this, but I think it's nowhere near fruition, and I would like to see the staff put more time and work, energy into that. We absolutely need a homeless shelter. In addition to which, I would like to see the city buy the land on where Buena Vista is, and perhaps using philanthropic money, HUD money, other money, to be able to keep those residents in their homes. Ideally, I would like to see that lot used to build low-income housing, to shelter these people. So I'm concerned that the city be upping those units that it's considering as part of, I think it's A-BAG requirements, and I've been, what I got the sense of is that the city, the staff, I see them dragging their feet, or at least not moving ahead as fast as they can be, to identify buildings for homeless shelters and actually step in and buy a building, or several buildings. These needs are absolutely there. We don't have a huge population in this city of homeless people, so it's really doable. I think we, somebody identified something like 147 homeless people, who are also, we know, people who work here, and people who have been associated with this city for a long time, so that you cannot really call them transient. In addition to which, I want to beg the city council to rescind its sleeping-in-cars ordinance, because I feel this is against the Fourth Amendment, and it is also cruel and inhumane, and these people pose no harm to anyone. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Salo. That's the end of the cards, at least at this point. And I'd like to turn it back to Councilmember Schmidt, and I know he has had some comments and also wanted to call on his other members on that, on that committee, who are Sharp, Price, and Holman.
Yes, as Chair of the Regional Housing Mandate Committee, we have had meetings each month since December, and have talked in detail a lot of the material that has been presented, and had dialogues with staff and and had dialogues with staff and the public about that. It's unfortunate that there are no minutes that can be shared so that we can share our concerns and insights. Usually, in a committee sense, you come out with a recommendation to council, but in our last meeting, we did not, and there was a motion, but it fell short on a 2-2 vote. So I think it might be useful for other council members, if we could, as a preliminary to the council discussion, have each member of the committee spend just two minutes or so to describe what their conclusions were when it came to vote on the motion. I think even though it was a 2-2 vote, I think there were four distinct points of view around that motion, and it might be good to share that with the other members. So request the Chair to give each member two minutes to...
Okay, we might even give them three. Big night. So I'll just do them in alphabetical order, Holman and Price and then Sharf.
Thank you. I hope this doesn't count into my two minutes, but I need to make a statement, too. I have had consulted with city attorney. I do not have a legal conflict of interest having to do with the Arastodaro sites proposed by Mr. Pierce. I list Zane McGregor on my Form 500 regularly, whether I have had income or not from that source. I do that as a means of transparency, so people just know that there is the potential and there is a relationship. So I do not have a conflict of interest. I spoke again with the city attorney, and we concluded that in the best interest of appearances that I should not participate, or that I would recuse myself from conversation having to do with the Arastodaro sites. So while I participated legally at the committee, I will not be participating in discussion on those sites at this meeting and forthcoming. So, that said. Well, first off, a huge thank you to the staff for reaching out and pursuing, because we were a pretty persistent committee, for continuing to work with the Housing Corporation to identify those units that might be in jeopardy. When you have the chance, I would like for staff to respond to the comments by Mr. Moss about Termon and market rate units converting to BMR, because those also had been discussed at committee, and there are a lot of obstacles. We wanted very much to pursue in-jepery units or market rate units and converting those to BMR, and there are huge hurdles about that, but we did have a lot of discussion about that. So thanks, staff, with the Housing Corp 23 units. The Tier One units, I think is, I hope, pretty much everybody sees, those are easy units to accept and identify. That's Tier One. Tier Two, the motion, and I still support this, but it's, you know, Frye's is a very, very difficult consideration. It's very difficult. We don't have the California Avenue concept plan yet and adopted, and that, that makes that site exceedingly frustrating and a challenge to identify a number of units. I supported the fewer units at the time because of possibilities and potentialities at that site. We don't know what's going to happen. That's the, that's the big question mark here. Tier Three, the 168 units, San Antonio, those are not ideal when it comes to identifying housing sites. There is no real ideal, but I think, given where we are right now and given that none of those sites require a rezoning, I think it makes sense to add those. Appreciate staff also taking out summer winds and the auto-dealship overlay properties, but I think it makes sense in an expeditious manner, and also, again, because we don't require any, any rezoning to include those. We also identified with staff, or staff told us at the Housing Committee, that we can continue this process to further refine this list of sites, such that if we find some better locations for housing besides the San Antonio sites, we can continue that discussion. And so that is where I would land, and I think that's...
Just about three minutes.
I think that's it.
Good. Thanks very much. Councilmember Price?
Yes, one of four similar and different opinions on the committee. I feel, continue to feel that we, the administrative draft is extremely well-done. I want to commend the staff, the community panel, and everyone. I want to make sure that's clear. I do feel, though, that we are falling short by not being more aggressive and assertive in identifying additional housing sites. So for example, I do support Tier Four and Five at a minimum. I would say even going to Six makes sense to me, but let me briefly speak to Tier Four and Five. These are the surface parking lots that have been identified. In the earlier iteration of the housing element, they were housing opportunity sites. We voted, and the majority of my colleagues decided that they wanted to take those off the list, so I am still pressing for having them to be seriously considered for a couple of reasons. One, the timeframe for the housing element is until 2023, and I think a lot of information, not only the data, but anecdotally, we know that the demand for housing in Palo Alto in all various income groups is significant, and we do not have sufficient supply. And it seems to me, if we have these surface parking lots where the concept could be shared, parking and residential, that we provide some parking capacity, we do not reduce the surface parking numbers, but we could have a combined project which would give housing units and parking which would address various needs. The other reason that's important is the panel, the community panel criteria for suitability for sites talks about walkability, near job centers, proximity to transit, and minimal impact on autos, on the use of autos. And frankly, these sites are really clear transit-oriented development sites that meet all of those criteria. In the Planning and Transportation Commission and Staff Recommendation, it talks about to identify more transit-rich housing sites in downtown California Avenue, et cetera. Well, frankly, these are the sites that fit that. I mean, in my mind, it couldn't be clearer. And I guess my real concern is the fact that we are meeting the very minimums, we are not even being bold enough to do a zoning change. And frankly, to not even go to surface parking lots where you could meet more than one goal, I think is inadequate. I feel that we need to be a little stronger in a demonstrated commitment to providing additional housing units. We all know that, or at least identifying the sites, we know that the development of these sites is contingent upon the economy, market forces, that we do not have control over. What we do have control over are the land use decisions and designations, which really make these sites as potentially as viable ones for housing. And so I will continue to press for that. I think that if we go forward with only Tiers One, Two, and Three, it is probably the most timid move, no rezoning, nothing bold about it, and I think the city of Palo Alto could do better. We have a lot of different needs, different community members who have different needs. We have workforce housing needs. People who are fully employed, who earn decent incomes, cannot crack into the housing market in the city of Palo Alto. So I look forward to other discussions about this. I know it'll be happening at the Housing Committee. I will continue to raise some of these concerns, but I think, I recognize the deadlines, I recognize what some of these recommendations are, but I feel that we are not being bold enough in terms of really looking to developing housing capacity, looking to develop the future of Palo Alto. We need to be making decisions that will make a difference so that a variety of people can continue to live here or will have opportunities to live here. So we become, try to maintain some semblance of economic diversity, which is greatly being reduced every, every day. And I think anything that we can do to build that capacity is the important thing to do. And so for those various reasons, I believe we should be going, at a minimum, through Tier Four and Five. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Sharf, that's the last person on the committee, and then go to Berman Burton Klein.
Thank you. So...
Oh, wait. You wanted to speak to that?
Yes, if I could speak as a member of the committee.
Will I speak for me?
Right after, before or after? He says, "Go ahead."
Go ahead.
Just, my point is very similar to Councilmember Price, that if we look through the current updating of our Palo Alto and at the goals, visions, policies, and programs, they are filled with notations at the appropriate place for dense housing, and what we're talking about are not just building housing, it's building dense housing, are near transit stations and where there are a number of enhancements that offer people a rich life around them in the neighborhood. Everything from jobs, shopping, retail, transit, public venues, meeting places. And what is striking about the recommendation that comes before us is that 43% of the units identified are south of, on South El Camino. 9% are in the downtown, and 14% are in the California Avenue area, so there are twice as many in areas of town that do not offer those rich enhancements. So I think we have a dilemma of either to press ahead with a housing unit that identifies sites in areas that are not near services, or to rethink what we have in the our Palo Alto visions, programs, and policies that are being presented to us. And I think it is important that we look very seriously at Tiers Four and Five, and I think there were some discussions that took place in the Citizens Panel that clearly identified a number of spots where this is possible. So look forward to a continuing discussion.
Wow, you stayed right in the three minutes. So moving along to Councilmember Sharf.
Thank you. As you can see, there were diverse views on the Housing Committee. However, Councilmember Holman and myself basically made the staff recommendation, and that's what the PTC came down at. And I don't want to put words in Councilmember Holman's mouth, so you can speak separately, but where I was, at least, on this was that we don't have a lot of time to get this done. And the important thing to do is to get our housing elements certified. We're not rezoning any other sites. We have the 369 units with existing zoning. There's no real controversy here. We're not going forward and telling someone we're rezoning, we're changing anything from before. We're simply taking the existing zoning that's existing on sites and then counting sites in the housing element. And then what we did is we actually did suggest that we put a few less units on the Frye's site, because why go above the 369? That gives us more flexibility down the road and may actually keep Frye's there, as certain members of the public have suggested. So we went for that. We also, on the San Antonio site, looked at them in detail and noticed that there was a nursery on one, and Councilmember Holman was the one who pointed that out at the committee, and we decided to take the Summer Winds site out. And I think staff took that Summer Winds site out here, because I noticed there's 168 units. So that was part of our thinking on all of this. So the other thing that happened at the committee, which was, which was interesting, was that we had a discussion about the 32-unit, was it, it's the Colorado Park apartment, 32 residential units, and this notion of when these deed restrictions apply. One of the things we've been doing in Palo Alto, and Commissioner Keller, actually, was the one that brought this up, so I'll give him credit for it, was that we tend to give, what, require 40-year deeds when possible, or 55, right? And Commissioner Keller pointed out that we really, when the Palo Alto Housing Corporation does stuff, we shouldn't do that. We should do it at 30 years, which is the more of the standard, because then, as those retire over, we then get credit for re-upping those, and the Palo Alto Housing Corporation, given their mission, given who they are, is very unlikely to be converting those to market rate units, anyway. And he suggested that's something we should look at in terms of changing our policy of the way we do that, for this reason, to give us more flexibility as a group. So with that, I would move the staff recommendation, and not the staff recommendation up there, but the staff recommendation in the book, the difference being that the one in the book says to submit the administrative draft, HCD, for preliminary review by the end of June.
So can we get that up as, as suggested?
It's the motion in the book, on packet page 696. It's identical to the one up there. The difference is, is that it has a number two, which is, and I believe they just left that out by mistake.
To submit the draft.
Frankly. I think that was just an oversight when they put that in there, because that was one of the three things that Vice Mayor Niss said in her opening speech about what we're called upon to do tonight. Thank you.
So, would you like to speak further?
Just very briefly. I think this motion, the important part about this motion is that the conversation does not end. What we're in effect doing is saying, let's get the legal requirement that's hanging over our head, like the sword of Damocles. I thought I'd go there.
Some Greek.
Some Greek. What this allows us to do, then, is to have a Palo Alto conversation. It allows us to discuss it, to vet it with the community, to say, let's, let's go ahead and maybe move one of these San Antonio sites out, or all the San Antonio sites out, or other sites on El Camino, sites that aren't as transit-rich, and let's look at sites downtown, let's look at sites on California Avenue, but let's vet these with, with all the stakeholder groups. If we go ahead now and say, we're going to not, we're going to take your existing zoning and change it to something else, and get our housing elements certified, and do that right now, we don't have time to have an outreach to the community. We're shortchanging the process. And these are, these are big decisions. Homeowners, I mean homeowners, landowners care a lot about this, people that own the sites, the community cares a lot about it. There's a lot of talk about honoring existing zoning in this community at the moment, and so I think we need to have a Palo Alto conversation, and the right vehicle to do that is the comprehensive plan discussion, and that's what this motion does, and that's the point of doing all of this. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Sharf. Councilmember Holman?
Yes, I have one, one small amendment to make, and this is to the motion that's in the packet, and it's, I think, up on the screen here, and that is Number Three, says to continue to identify more transit-rich housing sites in downtown the California Avenue area. Councilmember Schmidt, I think it was, I think, excuse me, mentioned maybe there would be some locations in, or sites in SOFA, so I would like to amend this to say to continue to identify more transit-rich housing sites, including in the downtown California Avenue area. So I don't want, I just don't want to restrict it to downtown and California Avenue.
So I'm just trying to understand where you want to make the change.
First sentence of Number Three, after housing sites, including...
Yeah.
In downtown.
That's fine.
Okay. I'm, thank you. I'm pleased to go forward here. I hope, still that staff will respond to Speaker about Termon. I do think it's the prudent thing to do right now. It's not a panacea. It's not what any of us would necessarily do, given more time and given, you know, our Palo Alto isn't done, the comp plan isn't done, any number of things, but I do think that there is kind of a no-harm approach, given, given the motion, so that's why I'm happy to support it.
Okay, so I think that's covered the committee, and next is Councilmember Berman.
So I want to thank the Regional Housing Mandate Committee staff, members of the Citizens Commission, that I had a couple of friends on, for the work on this. I know it's no small feat, especially with the consolidated timeframe, and because of the consolidated timeframe, I think that the motion makes a lot of sense. I think the proposal makes a lot of sense. I'm intrigued by a conversation of the Tier Four and Tier Five sites when the time is right, but right now, the time isn't right. But right now, the time isn't right. Right now, we have to do everything we can to submit, you know, our proposal to HCD, because I believe that the penalty of not doing so is pretty severe. And putting ourselves in that position doesn't make a lot of sense. You know, as has been mentioned tonight, we have the opportunity to amend this as we go. And I think we've all expressed an interest in continuing to analyze this. So this isn't necessarily a final version. It's just a version, hopefully, good enough to get approval from the state, which while I know some residents don't necessarily think we should do, it's imperative that we do, because the penalties of not doing so are really draconian and would be detrimental to the community. The one question I have has to do with the conversation about the Arastodero sites. And so I don't know, because we don't have minutes. And so I was curious about the conversation that occurred. The staff report says, you know, the committee requested additional information, and there was a discussion about workforce housing. But, and I didn't have time to watch the two-hour video to see what that conversation was. So I don't know if anybody can provide a synopsis of what that discussion was like, based on the proposal we got from Mr. Pierce.
I'd be happy to provide the synopsis. I would normally ask Councilmember Holman to provide the synopsis, because she was the advocate for it. But you've accused yourself, right? So I will give it. Mr. Pierce came forward, and he's here tonight, if you have questions to ask him. So I think that would also be an appropriate thing, if you wish to do that. He came to the first Regional Housing Mandate Committee, suggested it. I believe Councilmember Holman suggested that staff take a look at this. And there was some discussion about that. And then what happened is it came back to the, on the second meeting. Mr. Pierce was not there, but he sent someone else in his stead who spoke for it. Councilmember Holman made a motion to go ahead and do this. There was not a second, so.
Just clarification, it was to look at them?
To look at.
To have staff explore it?
To have staff explore.
Just to clarify?
I thought it was to include it in the motion, actually.
I don't think, I thought it was to clarify or have staff.
Well, it's on the tape, whatever.
Yeah, whatever.
It's on the tape. I believe it was to include it in the motion, frankly. We'll leave it at that. And that failed for lack of a second, and that ended the discussion on that basis.
Okay, so when it says here.
Because it's from RM1 to RM30. The argument I made against it, frankly, was that it's on Arastodero, it's near the Maybell site, it's rezoning from R1 to R30. And what we're looking here to do is not do controversial things and do major rezones at this moment.
I see.
And that was my argument against it.
I see. And then when it says here that additional information was requested, that was, I didn't realize I got to discuss at two different RMC meetings. I thought that was, okay. Okay, that's all the questions I have. Thanks.
End of your comments?
End of my comments.
Okay, Councilmember Burt.
Okay, first question is, I look at Appendix B. We have a lot of different columns. And I'm not quite clear on, really, how each of those columns relates to our housing element. So we have what's the density allowed, that's under existing zoning, and then the maximum yield. And then we have something called realistic capacity. And that doesn't appear to be the same as what's in the housing inventory, right? Because there's no column here on what's listed in the housing inventory?
Councilmember Burt, the realistic capacity is that 20 units per acre calculation for all the sites.
Twenty, everything is calculated as 20 units per acre in here?
For those sites that are zoned, for example, CN, in January, we upzoned those units to 20 units per acre. So for those, we have used the maximum zoning for those. So if you look at, for example, 3707 El Camino Real, the max density is 20 units per acre under the maximum yield, and the same for the realistic capacity. However, if you look at the next 470 Cambridge, which is CC, which allows 30 units per acre, we didn't calculate it at the max density yield. We said that the realistic capacity is more appropriate at 20 units, which produces five units. And that's how we are calculating to get to the 369.
So what's the reasoning as to why 20 is the realistic capacity?
Historically, we have, in RM30 or CS zoned, where it has a maximum of 30 dwelling units per acre, the city has never approved up to that point. Lately, it has, but historically, it has not done 30 units per acre. Generally, it's about 20. That's the first reason. And secondly, the realistic capacity was used to match the city's default density, which was assigned by the state.
So when we have a permissible density, would the state not recognize that density in the housing element?
Yeah, that is where tiers, we have that as an option in that, for example, if a zoning is RM30, they would not generally accept the full 30 units per acre, because historically, the city has not done that. In looking at past projects, the city has not zoned or allowed 30 dwelling units per acre, max density. So even increasing it.
Not allowed, or there were not projects that came forward? So if they were, fell within the existing FAR, so it's one thing whether we would allow an FAR increase beyond what current zoning allows in order to get up to that 30 units per acre of larger units. But that's different from whether we would allow something to come in that is a proposal in terms of unit density that fell in line with the FAR. Are you, I need to understand where we don't allow that.
Maybe I can jump in. It really comes down to HCD's believability. It's a little bit like the second units. We've had folks say, well, why don't you just put more second units in there? You allow second units. There are all kinds of lots that don't have second units where they could be built. HCD looks at our track record. And how many second units do we really permit? And that's how we got that number of 32. The realistic capacity is similarly, similar. They'll look at what is our track record for approving higher-density multifamily housing projects? And as Tim indicated, until very recently, the city just hadn't approved.
But I'm trying to distinguish first, there's a couple of different threads to this. One is what the city would allow. And that's what was cited. And so I want to get clarification on, under what circumstances have we not allowed housing to the zoned density? Any examples? Where the project came in under, I know there are places where we don't allow it when they ask for an FAR bonus. But where, if they come in with a project that conforms to the FAR and goes up near or to the maximum of units per acre, have we not allowed it?
You know, we can get back to you on this. The one thing I would say is that this is in the existing housing element. So this is not something that we are proposing. This methodology was used in the existing housing element that was adopted by the council in August. So we've just perpetuated this distinction between what is the maximum yield or capacity and what is realistic to assume for housing element purposes.
And then you made, Mr. Wong, you made reference to, recently, that we've had some projects that maybe were near that density? The zone density?
That is correct. Oh, Councilmember Burt. In the current housing element, and this is located in Chapter 3, but there is a table that shows residential density of approved projects in the past. 1101 East Meadow up to 801 Alma. It's a history of past projects. And for example, the densities range from approximately 11 to 29 units per acre. So for example, there are no projects at that 30 DU per acre threshold, if it was, if that was the max allowable. The only two recent are 3159 El Camino, which I believe is coming to you in the form of tenant map. But that is, that was at the maximum, 30 units per acre. And the only other development that had a higher density within its zoning was the 801 Alma. That was RT50 zoning, and it came in about 80 units per acre. But all other projects have not reached that.
So I'll explain the reasons that I'm asking. One is, I'm trying to determine whether the historic pattern is necessarily our current and future pattern. And are we seeing that there is a demand such as that we will be seeing proposals that may be smaller units than we've historically had, but more per acre and complying with our FAR limitations? And if that's the case, then we don't necessarily have to zone some of these other properties for housing, because we may have an arguable case that we have a greater housing that could be built under some of the existing zoning. So we're looking, in some cases, changing the zoning to accommodate additional units when we actually have existing zoning that could accommodate more units than we have in our housing element. And they may be more applicable and justifiable today in the housing element than they have been historically.
Councilmember Burt, just to quickly respond, I think your point is well-taken. That's really why we included Tier 7, that category, in the tool, to let people explore this idea. But I did want to offer one correction, which is none of the sites in the tiers we're talking about in the motion and the staff recommendation require rezoning. There is that one anomaly that the Vice Mayor referred to at the opening of this evening, which we can talk about, which does assume a rezoning, a net total of four units, that if we wanted to be entirely 100% consistent, no rezonings assumed here, we would take out those four units.
So the surface parking lots, they're not a rezoning?
The surface parking lots would require rezoning, but I'm referring to the motion and the staff recommendation. None of those sites require rezoning.
Okay. All right. And then one other question. The Frye's site was listed here as 12.5 acres, but I thought I remembered from the California Avenue Plan that it was listed as 16. And I'm not sure whether I, my memory is faulty on that. So you may not be able to answer that at this moment, but I'm real curious. And then I just want to briefly comment on the Calav and the downtown notions. I agree with a number of my colleagues that we do want to move in that direction. Although the surface parking lot issue has got me thinking, and I just want to toss this out for the Housing Committee to think about more in the future, which is, you know, when we were looking at the California Avenue and the J. Paul site, and we had the preliminary transportation study, which basically said, you can't put that much development there. We're going to have gridlock in particularly the Cloverleaf going eastbound on Oregon. And now we do have a lot of density that is being proposed for this area. But as we look at the California Avenue parking lots, historically, I've kind of thought, no, we don't want to give those up. But it's just something to think about. At what point in time do we not necessarily reach the capacity on development in Calav, but we reach the capacity on cars being driven to Calav? And if you can't drive them there, you don't need to park them. So it's something to think about. If we're looking at a transformation in how we are going to have transportation to and from future development, maybe we can just think about both the downtown and the Calav parking lots in that context. And I say that as somebody who up until now had said, no, we shouldn't touch those for housing. And I'm not saying I'm ready to buy into it. It's just a different thought process that I think we should consider. The other thing about downtown is just that we have the downtown cap study going on. If we don't have any increase in the downtown cap until we show significant progress on both the parking and the traffic that we have as problems today, that's the commercial cap, as you all know, then I suspect that we're going to see more interest in housing downtown and that we should really begin right now to look at how we adjust our zoning so that we begin to make that shift, that we have more people living downtown and not such a growth in commercial development downtown. So I just want to share those two thoughts.
Thank you, Councilmember Klein.
Well, I have to say that hearing what you all, all the hoops that you have to go through with the HCD and some of their arbitrary actions, I think they make the Internal Revenue Service look good. Which leads me to my first question to the city attorney. Where does the HCD get the legal authority to require this surplus?
Thank you, Kara Silver, Senior Assistant City Attorney. That is a good question. There is a statutory requirement in the housing element law that says if a housing site is identified on the inventory and it's removed for some reason, if, you know, a commercial building goes there or some other use, then the city is required to substitute the site. And that, to add another housing site on the inventory.
I understand that, but this seems to be doing that in advance of something that may or may not ever occur.
Yes, it is, yes. So that particular provision, though, only applies to general law cities. So since we are a charter city, we have taken the position that it does not apply. And in response, what HCD did was require the last go-around that we include a policy to, you know, monitor and to essentially include a type of surplus. And so that was what was negotiated last go-around. This particular go-around, we think that they will require a surplus as well as part of the negotiation. And, you know, they may not have that statutory right. You're correct. And I think that was why the council recommended that we, you know, start with a lower threshold on the surplus.
Well, if we don't think they've got the legal authority to do it, why are we complying?
We want a certified housing element, and there are serious ramifications of not having one.
That's what I thought you were going to say. And the IRS does not do that. So it makes the IRS a better bureaucracy to work with than HCD. No, I'm not very serious about it. I don't like the idea that a bureaucratic agency can add to the requirement. I think we're sort of a bait and switch. We're told that we have to come up with 1,900 units or whatever, and the real number is 2,100. And the increase is just not in the law. Couldn't we ask for some declaratory relief or something of that nature? Or sue them after we get our certification?
I have some unfortunate experience with this kind of debate with HCD, which is difficult, difficult to prevail in. The truth is that they interpret their statutory authority broadly.
That's what we have courts for, though.
I think any agency that would get into that kind of dispute with HCD, just like if you would with the IRS, would probably suffer some, ultimately, some consequences. I think as staff, we, our experience is that in all jurisdictions, HCD asks for some surplus. Because it's not a statutory requirement, we can't point you to the point in the law where it says how big a surplus it should be. But they routinely ask for extra units. And our recommendation is that we include some. I think the committee suggested that we could use this as part of our negotiation here and maybe include less than we've suggested initially. But I think our feeling is it would be a mistake to go, to submit a document with. But, but I think our feeling is it would be a mistake to go, to submit a document with zero surplus.
That's very hard for me to accept. The City Council could not get away with behaving that way with applicants before So I, I think we really need to take a stronger stand. This gets to my long, frequently stated, strong distaste for this law, and I know you've said something along those lines, but I, I think that the discussion tonight just adds to it, that, and it is part of our legislative program to see what we can do to get this law remedied or repealed. We're spending an extraordinary amount of time trying to comply with this, and we don't even get to the broader question, are we really accomplishing anything? Is the state really accomplishing anything with this law? We had desire to build additional housing before this law ever came into existence, as do cities in other states that do not have such a law. So I don't think they can find any additional housing that's traceable to the existence of this law. So with that frustration, I will vote for, for this, and I appreciate my colleagues who are on this committee, because I think that they're spending a lot of time on something that unfortunately is required, but I don't think is very useful.
So I think I'm the last to speak. Does anybody else need to speak, that we set? Let me say mine, and I'll, I'll come back. Two of you want to add to this, you're on the committee, I will let you go ahead and do that. First you, and then Greg, or vice versa. So because Councilmember Klein brought it up, let's talk about what has happened in cities that didn't comply, because there have been those good examples. Maybe, maybe this is for you, Kara.
Sure. There, there are some, actually neighboring cities who recently were sued. Menlo Park was the most recent victim of, of a lawsuit by a group of housing advocates, and that housing lawsuit resulted in a expenditure or a, a settlement agreement where Menlo Park agreed to pay approximately, I think, $800,000 to a consultant to prepare a housing element on a very short time period. They were also required to pay attorney's fees, and it ended up costing over $1 million to them. The law also provides other remedies. A court, if it finds that the city does not have a certified housing element, can issue an injunction requiring the city to stop issuing all permits, all building permits to all projects until a housing element is put in compliance. It can also require city, require cities to actually issue permits for housing projects, in particular affordable housing projects, again, until a housing element is, is put in compliance. And most importantly, if we do not get a housing element certified by the deadline this, this year, or following year, the, the compliance period for another housing element is four years rather than eight years.
I think that last one is one of the worst parts of that. But I, I do know, I know how frustrating it is. We've all talked about this, and how could we get state law changed? If I could, I'd get the Brown Act changed as well, that, well, the legislature doesn't have to comply with it, and they continue passing, you know, laws that involve that. It's, it's frustrating to be sort of at the end of the food chain instead of at the, at the top of it. So I wanted to bring that up, and also the aspect of second units is very interesting. I know we've talked about that for years, and every once in a while, somebody says, you know, aha, we've discovered the answer. We can put second units in, you know, 200 houses, and that takes care of it. It doesn't go well in a lot of areas of town, and I know that's been a constancy. There's, there's a, a lot of discussion of transit-rich. Somebody brought up the idea of more housing downtown. Was that you, Pat, or someone?
Yes.
Yes, most recently then. And I think that there's probably very, there are very few areas that are as, as in demand as downtown is right now, both for the Mark Berman's, and we get asked all the time about, why don't you have more parking downtown for people who are getting started, looking for something like that, but also for those who are looking to give up their big house or whatever it is and move into something smaller and closer to the downtown area. So I think that idea of moving in that direction is a very good one. And perhaps that's something we can be taking up with the AR Palo Alto discussion under the Comp Plan update at the same time. I, I know there'll be some pushback on that, but I, I think if we're talking about demand and what our city really wants, they'd like more areas where they, where they can walk. So I'm going to be voting for the motion, and I'll go back first to you, Greg, and then to Karen.
Let's see, a couple questions. Let's see, the second item on the motion, you want approval to submit the administrative draft. Now, I was looking through the draft as you have it, and it is missing certain sections. One of the sections missing is financial resources. And I was very interested in that, and I looked at the older housing element, and it says local resources come from residential in lieu fees and commercial in lieu fees. But in a recent report to the Finance Committee, you reported the balances as of June 2013, and the residential in lieu balances covered 60% of the total, implying that our current housing element is asking residents, residential housing, to pay the majority of local contributions to affordable housing. Now, we are under, as you say, a state mandate to do this, and the state mandate is jobs-based. Because there are X number of jobs, you need to provide affordable housing. And yet, we're asking the housing residents to pay the majority of in lieu funds. That doesn't make any sense. What are we going to say in this year's housing mandate?
Councilmember Schmidt, we, you know, we can, there are some holes in the admin draft that we need to fill before we submit this. I don't think that that is a particularly difficult or complex hole to fill. Just with regard to your substantive question, I, I think the city collects more in housing impact fees from commercial projects than from residential projects, just because there are so many more commercial projects than residential projects. Also, we are currently undertaking an update to, a nexus study that will allow us to examine and update our impact fee approach for housing. So if there are inequities or things that the council believes we should adjust in our fee, impact fee program, we will have an opportunity to do that when the nexus study is complete. Did you have something?
And Councilmember Schmidt, I haven't seen the June 2013 finance report, but the residential in lieu housing balance may be very high, due in part, Sterling Park has paid, as you know, Sterling Park is in litigation with the city in regards to fees. However, prior, during the litigation, they have paid 3.6 million in, in lieu housing fees, but we cannot touch that amount until the litigation is resolved. So although the residential in lieu housing balance may be quite large, the city cannot touch that amount until that litigation, yeah, has been completed.
Yeah, I just do note that there have been, I think, I believe, three reports in the last two weeks that have come to the Infrastructure Committee, the Finance Committee, and the council, and each one of them say that the residential development impact fees, housing in lieu fees, are higher than the commercial. Now, if you have some other numbers, I think it would be important to tell us that before you ask us to give a final approval on the resources available for our affordable housing.
Councilmember Schmidt, I'll be happy to provide our fund balances for the past two years, which will clearly show that commercial in lieu fees are being collected at a much higher rate than residential in lieu.
Okay. I think it's important that if we have a section on financial resources, that we be explicit about our commitment. I guess also I've been struggling with this notion of why, if there are so many obvious reasons why dense housing should be located in the center of life and activity, so few houses are going up, or so many of our housing units are identified in the downtown and California Avenue. And I wondered if it has something to do with the way we calculate the assessed valuation limits, the A slash V criteria. It's the last column on the. I know you do make an exception. My thinking is that the land valuation tends to be low when you have little turnover, and under the rules of Prop 13, commercial properties do not get revalued. So you tend to have a high property to, to land ratio. Now, you do have some exceptions in here, but as I read through, the vast majority of exceptions come when an applicant comes and says, oh, there's special circumstances I want to bring. So I'm wondering if that provides a bias in how we evaluate land and property. You know, I look around at other communities that are going through commercial expansions, the south of market area in San Francisco, the boom in the mid-market area in San Francisco, the Mission Bay area in San Francisco. And each of those is finding urban vitality in creating housing as well as commercial spaces. And yet, here we are with a, you know, like a 19th century model, saying, oh, the urban center of town should be a commercial center. So that's a mystery, and I think it's, it's one of the questions that are, are being asked.
Greg, could we leave that for the AR Palo Alto discussion and, and move on to Karen?
Well, let me make one amendment proposal.
Okay.
The problem is, we are voting for the housing element before the AR Palo Alto discussion will be complete. That's why it's important.
Out of necessity, yeah.
So let me propose one amendment on number three. Under three, I propose that we cross out three words in there, phrases in there. The first two words, to continue.
At the front, the first two words?
The first two words under three. After California Avenue area, cross out after HCD certification. And at the end, cross out the phrase, after the city has met the statutory, it's just statutory. And to substitute, or to add in two short phrases, after to identify at the top, add in up to 100. And after, at the end, where it says transit-rich identified sites, add in before the city. So that last sentence would read, to identify up to 100 more transit-rich housing sites in downtown the California Avenue as part of the comprehensive plan update process, and consider exchanging sites along San Antonio and sites along South Al Camino that are outside of identified pedestrian nodes for the more transit-rich identified sites before the city deadline for housing element certification. Gives a time deadline to come back.
No.
What?
The answer is no from the maker, and I don't remember who made the second. Help me out.
Doesn't matter. Maker said no.
Thank you. Ben.
So it's an amendment, any second?
There's no second.
Okay.
Okay, thanks very much. Councilmember Holman.
I'll be very brief here, and perhaps Councilmember Klein was meaning a rhetorical question, but staff hadn't taken the opportunity to respond to one thing, and I would like to do that. Councilwoman Klein said, what are we accomplishing? I think it's more a point of what are we not accomplishing? And we've all spoken a number of times about the housing mandates, and the very premise that they're based on is flawed, because if it's, it doesn't really reduce greenhouse gases. You can't say that somebody who lives in Green Meadow and works at Stanford Hospital creates fewer greenhouse gas emissions than someone who lives in Menlo Park by the creek and works at Stanford Hospital. So that, that's a fallacy. That's an absolute fallacy. And the thing that, that I was looking for, a response for is, we spent a good amount of time at, at the committee level, and that's why I really made a point of thanking staff for identifying these 23 units from the Housing Corp., because we asked them and asked them to try to identify properties where we could convert existing units to affordable units. And the hurdles that you have to go through, the hurdles that are set up are virtually impossible to surpass. So for me, it's like, this is not about creating housing units. It's not about retaining housing units. It's not about reducing greenhouse gases. And that's why I think this whole, this whole issue of the housing mandate and HCD's requirements need to be lobbied with our state lobbyists and with our state legislators, which I know there has been some of that, but it needs to be stepped up. Because if you can't rescue, let's say, a small apartment building of 16 units that are threatened with demolition, or before they're threatened with demolition, and convert those to affordable units, what is this about? So you lose those 16 units, and you get two or three expensive townhouses. This isn't about housing. It is not about housing. It's not about creating housing or, or retaining housing. And if that was a rhetorical question you put out there, apologize, but it was too good an opportunity to pass.
You expressed more eloquently what I was trying to get at. Thank you.
Okay. Not seeing any other lights on, we are about to vote on the motion, which is in front of you, which does indeed, I'm going to use the right word, certify, or allow us to forward the housing element for certification from the state, and they will do that, am I correct, at the end of January, hopefully?
Just to clarify, we're, hopefully with this input, we'll prepare an administrative draft that'll go to HCD for their first review. Then it comes back to the city for changes, further public input, additional recommendations, another council action, before it goes to the state for certification.
Thank you for that.
Simple process.
So the apple, the apple will get many more bites out of it before we're done with it, correct?
Correct.
Okay. In that case, then, could you vote, please? And we're down to, pardon? So with that, this passes on a six to one with council members. Price and Shepherd absent, Mayor Shepherd absent, and I'm glad to report to you that the mayor says she was successful in, if I'm reading her correctly, in being accepted as part of the airport roundtable, so her... as part of the airport roundtable, so her mission went well, and...
Oh, this was at San Mateo County, that old ball?
Right, yes. And we're the only city in this county that can ask to belong, and it looks as though Mayor Shepherd has been successful. Ta-da. Okay, thank you all very much, the meeting is adjourned.
Mayor Nuss, I just, I wanted to indicate that our plan at this point is to work with the Regional Housing Mandate Committee to fill the holes and get this thing out the door, knowing that it will come back to council as a revised draft, and I just want to make sure that council was okay with that.
Yes, I know. Yes, and we appreciate this, and know there's such a lot of time and attention that goes into it. So thank you both, thank you everyone for being here on a special meeting night.
Very special.
And I was asked to find out if anyone is interested in meeting more than twice this year, and I'm not going to pursue that. So thank you all very much.